Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Beta City Council. It is October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and it is six oh five P M. Roll call.
Dan McIntosh?
Here.
Jason Daly?
Here.
Randy Hall?
Here.
Michael Ferguson?
Mike didn't say he was gonna be here. He was gonna try to remote in. But I haven't heard about that since.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
Mayor Shaw.
Also present. I'm okay with considering Mike having given us notice that he was gonna try to call in, so. I'm sure he'll be here soon. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Worden Park, so the footer installation, it's not quite complete yet. The inspection got delayed until Tuesday, which passed. This will be before the concrete is poured, they inspect the rebar and the holes and all that. So, no issues with that. They're just looking to get a concrete truck out here to pour those, pour those footers now. So, that should happen any day, and the shelter will be installed after that. Worden Park, also, the jail, the chimney and roofing work begins soon. Those permits finally got approved, so that work should be starting any time. Subdivision pre-application meeting, so a developer had their first, their first pre-application meeting with our engineer and our planner. And it's for a courting home subdivision to the east of Alpine Court. It would be, there'd be a connector off of Tenth Street, so Tenth would get extended slightly. So, a very good, well thought out plan. Our developer or engineer and planner did have input for them, so they're gonna go back to the drawing board and come up with a, with a first proposal for us, so hopefully we'll see that pretty soon.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Are they planning on putting roads in, streetlights, sidewalks?
Yep, so yeah, our subdivision-
So it doesn't end up like Alpine Court, which is just-
Yep, so, so we have, you know, we have a full set of design standards. We've given them our draft urban design standards that you all have in your packets tonight, so that they can be aware of the new, the newer slightly updated standards, so that they can build their subdivision to the new, the new standards that we'll expect. And yeah, it included, if I remember correctly, sidewalks on one side of the street, lighting, they're gonna have to adhere to proper stormwater collection, so because of subdivision, they'll need to have a basin where the water can go and all that kinda stuff, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's a full-on professional deal, so.
Good.
We're gonna have, we have big things of subdivisions, just-
How does it connect to the sewer of water?
So, water is along Tenth already. Sewer, the homes would be slightly downgraded from our current public sewer, so they were talking about grinder pumps. Luckily, in our new urban design standards, we have a, chapter eight is for grinder pumps, so that'll be the correct way to do that. That said, we have grinder pumps in town already. Some of the new homes that were constructed recently are on grinder pumps, on a pressurized system that pumps upward to the sewer main, but those are located on the private property and they are owned by the homeowner, and they are not the city's responsibility to maintain.
That's what I wanted.
Yep. So. Yep, so it turns it into a-
Paste liquid.
All of the above, and yeah, there's a much smaller line, and yeah, it pumps it up to the main.
On, and I can wait till council report, but with that coming in, also, the main water line on Tenth Street is asbestos. And they're getting ready to replace the whole thing. So from Alpine Court to Tenth Street, all the way down, is there, should we look into widening the road at that point? Because they're gonna tear, it's gonna be cut all the way down the street.
Part of a subdivision application includes a traffic study, which they're gonna have to provide to us. And so as far as whether the roads will be able to handle it and all that, that'll come into the package.
Okay, because, no, I'm talking about Tenth Street, because it's, I don't know what, if everybody decided to start using it now or what, because it's gotten busy.
Has it?
Yeah, like, almost every other time I have to pull onto-
I agree that, I mean, I can see, when we had done that, this is back in twenty sixteen now, I think, when we did Tenth Street, we wish, because it is a main connector, it should have been, it should have been widened. I can see some of the smaller streets that aren't main arterials probably could have, could stay smaller, but Tenth should have been bigger, so we may wanna look into that and-
If we're already, if we're getting ready to add fourteen more houses at the end of it.
Make same things work.
Perhaps.
Widen most of it.
Yeah, I mean, they can add, add four feet, six feet, whatever it is to make it complete, so. Anyway, well, except, there's a traffic impact study that'll be part of that, so.
So that new development with the trees, they're gonna have a set of new wells, huh?
Up on the hill.
Where they build up the trees?
No, they're gonna be on sewer.
They are.
By, on the hill, by, on five, oh, adjacent to five oh six? Water and sewer. Yeah, water is on both sides of, of the property. And sewer, the closest sewer is about three hundred or six hundred.
Yeah, on the inner street, so it'll be coming down across to the man-
How about the street? Oh, I see.
Down, yeah.
There will be have, there will have to be an extension of the public sewer slightly to reach that property, but our codes require developers to pay for the extension of public sewer.
That's a blue cloud file, we'll say it's-
Uh, no, they'll come up from the south. Long eighth. So yeah, so it's a growth, exciting. Developers were really, were great folks. Both of the ladies that presented knew what they were doing, so. Looking forward to that. Item number four, public hearing, the twenty twenty-three budget. Hearing by the city council will happen at our next meeting on October twenty-seventh at six P M. This will be the first of two or, two or three public hearings. Two or three?
Two.
Three. To be the first of three separate public hearings. And then the second public hearing will, which will include the budget as well as the property tax levy, will happen on November tenth at six o'clock. And then it's not on the list, but our first meeting in December, the December first, there will be another public hearing. That'll be the final public hearing on the budget.
It's on the calendar.
Yep, it's on the calendar. I just ran out of space. And then item number six, special council meeting, so as a reminder, we did move our Thanksgiving week council meeting to November seventeenth, the week before, prevent interference with that Thanksgiving holiday, so just a reminder about that. So.
Are you gonna mention December now or wait?
I was gonna wait for that, when I give too much information. No one's listening anyway.
You make your heads explode.
All right, enough of the mayor talk. Council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report?
Yes, tomorrow night from seven to nine, family movie night, Scooby Doo, Camp Scare. Be there, be square.
Great, so, so there's a movie night at Worden Park?
Yes.
For the, for the folks?
Yeah, for the kiddies.
Come enjoy the movie?
Yep.
Any other council reports? All right, we're done, moving on to agenda approval.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda for city council meeting, uh, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion, Minister Parsons, to approve the city council meeting agenda. Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. McIntosh. Any discussion? All right, here we go. Let's say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion that we-
We have a motion of Ms. McIntosh to approve in a few minutes, September twenty-second, we have a second. Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion that we approve the beginning of October twenty twenty-two vouchers for one hundred and twenty-nine thousand seventy-five dollars and one second.
Motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the personal register. Seconded by Mr. Paul. Any discussion? Here we go, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening.
Hello.
Law enforcement, total score September, during the September, there are total of two hundred and seventy-one citizen contacts, a total of twenty-four calls for service, none of which were when a deputy was dedicated to Beta. Thirteen traffic stops resulting in one criminal citation and one infraction.
Criminal citation?
It just suspended. Just another life that's running away, nothing to add, no stuff, calm, very calm.
Are we working on the squatter again?
Down on the park?
Yep.
He seems to like to think that that is-
Yeah. And I don't know if we can watch patrol, he went by, I called it in, but he went by down Tenth Street at probably seventy miles an hour, just lying down the street.
And I just saw him going down Eighth Street, he almost hit my neighbor back out of the truck. Barely down Eighth Street, had this, well, and they have a white car on the floor, they were backing out, almost nailed it.
Yeah, I don't see, the problem is, yeah, we know where to watch for, we just, he's not moving a lot when we're out, so.
Right now, he's driving that, yeah, that black truck with the white tailgate, so.
Yeah, almost nailed the neighbor.
It was me. I will go down, again, we have to catch him in the act of those, but I will go down anytime I can, talk with him and let him know that we're watching, so.
You can tell him we saw him, I will hit, uh, back out.
I will definitely tell him that.
That house, south of me. I have that fence, I'm gonna back now.
So again, south of you on the, on the east side of the river.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
He was gonna speak and like-
Good. Any other questions for the Sheriff's Department?
It's had to be this ammunition, something.
All right, moving on to city business. Item number one, council would consider ordinance twenty twenty-two oh four, adoption of standards for accessory dwelling units, A D U's. This was on the agenda last meeting, and it wasn't in your packets, we wanted to make sure that everyone had ample time to take a look at it. As a reminder, planning committee worked on this, they had public hearings, and they submitted it to council for, they recommended it to council for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero four, this, the standards for accessory dwelling units.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero four for the A D U's. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Discussion.
They don't have enough ordinance, is there any help? People with practice?
No.
No.
Never enough ordinance. So, in our comprehensive plan that was approved a couple of years ago, part of it, part of the comprehensive plan that was in the, the eighty, so we meant eighty two comprehensive plan, but we don't have any rules for that. The V is our kind of, just kind of, part of that package, create rules for A D U's.
Is he making some more?
Further discussion. Hearing, who was in favor of the twenty twenty-two four for the adoption of standards for accessory dwelling units? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, council would consider resolution twenty dash twenty twenty-two, updating the Timberland Bank checking account signers. So there was an updated resolution that was handed to you in hard copy just before the meeting, different than the one that was mailed last night. The only, the addition is for billing clerk, Kristin Miller, to be added to there, so. The full list would be the mayor, the mayor pro temp, the city court treasurer, the deputy clerk, and the billing clerk, so. All three clerks would be on the, without check signing authority, so that was, that was the one addition. Yeah, and of course, yeah, the mayor pro temp and the mayor would still, would still be on there.
I make a resolution to approve, I mean, a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty twenty-two, updating the Timberland Bank checking account signers.
Motion by Ms. McIntosh to approve resolution twenty dash twenty twenty-two for the checking account signers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Discussion.
My name has an S on the end of it.
It's only one of you.
Yeah.
Or, 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 multiple persons.
We are.
There is a, the attorney told me the technical term, the technical legal term for a mistake in a document like that, where you change, go back and you can change, after council approves it, we can go back and change it, because it does not substantially change the, the content of the, of the document, so we can do that. It was a really odd word, I've never heard of it before, and I don't know what it is. There's a word for it.
Just an S, that's all.
So we'll, but we can take care of that. I can look it up real quick.
No.
No, okay. I don't even think I could pronounce it, if I remember what it was, it was so long, anyway.
Probably.
Okay, so further discussion about resolution twenty dash twenty two, twenty twenty-two? Do we have a person, a second?
We did.
We did? We do. All right, so we're at the discussion phase. Any other discussion?
No.
All right, here none, all those in favor of approving resolution twenty dash twenty two? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number three, council would consider Roglan's- That's, um, as I've said many times before, this list of charges has been reviewed by Civil West, who is our engineering firm unrelated to the contractor that's looking out for our interests. They confirm that this work was done completely, doesn't have an itemized list on it, but, but they confirm that it has been done correctly.
I make a motion that we, uh, make the Roglan, like, payment number sixteen for two hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve Roglan's application for payment number sixteen, is Rick, do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Discussion.
And this is all from the grant?
It's all from the grant. Yeah, so, so when this is all said and done, we're still gonna have money in the grant, and we're gonna be done.
Okay.
We're, we're-
Is this just the last?
We're not, we're not at risk of running out of grant money for this project.
Don't tell them that.
Aside with what's planned. Yep, that's the, enough to finish, but the range without sales tax, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. So, in the original bid estimate from Roglan's, there's only about one hundred and thirty-five thousand left of the entire project. There, there are gonna, there is gonna be another change order coming. So, but things like, well, like the trees, there's gonna be some new things, like, they, they've realized that, they have the fence up, they've got the security fence around the, they've got the security fence around the, around the site right now, there are a number of overhanging trees over the fence, and so they're gonna hire an arborist to come in and take care of those trees, and so that'll, that'll go on the grant. It's nice to have grants for that kinda thing, right?
Yeah.
Are they gonna take the tree down or just trim it?
They're gonna, they're, they'll make that decision on whether the whole tree needs to come down or just the limbs. Some of those trees are probably on adjoining properties, they aren't on our property, so we're, they're gonna talk to the property owners about that. Luckily, most of the trees aren't, they're not trees that would produce any lumber, they're just good for firewood, so they'll have very little value over time, and so if we do need to reimburse the property owner for the tree, it's not gonna be much. So, we should expect some change orders for that kinda thing. I don't know, was the flooring, I don't know, was the flooring on the recent, the recent change order, I think that. So, yeah, so they, get the original design for the building down there, they were just gonna leave the floors concrete, it's all those people walking in and out and everything, but they've, are having issues with dust, the concrete is just creating all of this dust and there's dust on everything, so they're gonna get linoleum in there, in the building, to take care of that, so. Anyway, so there's some little, little change orders like that.
Paint it? Okay.
Anyway, so there's some other change orders that are gonna come in, but nothing, nothing too huge. So, we, again, we had a, we had a first, we have a second for this one?
Can you second it?
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving Roglan's application?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number four, council would consider awarding bid for the Worden Park picnic shelter rain gutter installation. So this is the older picnic shelter that's down there, it's never had gutters, even down there, when it's raining, the water just falls all the way around the building. We solicited bids from the small works roster, we solicited thirteen different companies that are in the local area, and we received bids from one, so. The agenda bill has a recommendation to approve the contract to five-star gutters and awnings. The amount was fourteen hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
And that's for the two gutters?
That's for the gutters on each side and four downspouts.
How, how long is that?
It's about, I think it was about forty feet on each side, plus, you know, twelve, fifteen feet in height for the four downspouts, so you're looking at one hundred and forty feet or something like that worth of gutter. Was that ten dollars a foot?
Almost eighteen dollars, but, and that's the only one that we got?
The only one we got out of the thirteen. I could read the names of the different companies, too.
He doesn't give the square foot, the linear footage, which is-
It was in the bid solicitation.
It's a forty feet long, directly ten feet to the roof.
Okay.
So that's only four feet? Oh, only forty feet?
Percent?
Eighty, so it's eighty.
So it'll be-
Forty on each side.
Forty on each side, so. Eighty, eighty or maybe-
Eighty for the horizontal and then another forty for the vertical.
But yeah, his price before tax is thirteen thirty.
Unmute me.
For input from me, I've done gutters down here at the store here recently, and it was quite a bit higher than that, so I, I would, I would go with your fourteen hundred dollar bid. And mine was just two sides, or three sides and four downspouts, same thing, and it was twenty, almost twenty-five hundred.
Does that mean you just made a motion?
Oh, I, I would, I'll make a motion that we approve the bid for the gutters, for the Worden Park picnic shelter.
We have a motion by Mr. Daily to approve the five-star gutters bid for the Worden Park gutters. Is there a second? I'll second it. Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Further discussion?
No.
All right, moving on to other discussion, all those in favor of awarding the contract for five-star gutters, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to your, 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 council would consider to discuss and give input on the Lewis County Animal Shelter interlocal agreement. So, the city has had an interlocal agreement with the county animal shelter since nineteen ninety-eight, they informed us. I don't even know if I was aware that we had an interlocal agreement with them from nineteen ninety-eight, but, but we did. The county is updating all of their, their policies regarding the shelter, there's a lot of updates, and so they have a new interlocal agreement that they have sent off to the cities. And so I wanted to give council time to take a look at that, give input. I have not sent it to the attorney- I have not sent it to the attorney yet for review to see what she thought of the interlocal agreement. But it's one of those things that doesn't cost us any money. If we use it, great, and if we don't use it, we don't use it.
They don't have any room, do they?
Yeah, so, so before, right, if you read the, the, the interlocal agreement, before we'd be allowed to bring anything there, we have to contact them and find out if.
They don't have room for much.
Yeah.
It's really not worth the paper written on, but, I mean, I guess having something, not possible thing.
I'm hoping.
Unless they get a banter news or sell me or something. But they're useless, well.
Yeah, I'm, I know that in there they had new, a new retention policy as far as how long they're gonna keep the animals on site before they remove them. So I'm hoping that that's part of their goal, you know, they run the.
They want them around here. I'm concerned about that. I, I, I don't foresee them coming here, but.
No.
It does say on here that they could provide for collecting. What they did that.
It's our job for collection.
It didn't say that on this line.
Yeah.
Well, three items, content and count provides for collection and disposition. I'm concerned about that. I don't know if they have dogs and animals without, you know, thousands of people such.
Says that we have not developed facilities, but we have procedures for the collection. And so they're a no-kill.
No.
They're not a no-kill.
They have a kill.
They're a kill. So, you know, it was, uh, it was something they sent us. I know council has been sensitive to the animal issue and I wanted to let y'all take a look at it and discuss it. We don't, we don't need to do anything with it.
Say, don't do nothing, I get this, the prices, one, and and I'm more in favor of housing them, not killing them.
I, I, I thought it was a non-kill shelter.
Yeah.
I, I, I would, I would check on that. So that's true. And the only, the main is that? Yeah, it's over by the.
My south wall, we did it there.
Still in different camp.
Well, I mean, the council doesn't want to entertain the interlocal grant. Is there some other information you'd like to know?
Time and we bring in more towns.
I have a question, court says in section number three that the city would be charged in terms of strength as well as on eternity.
Yeah, I had looked that up and that was one of the things I had sent council. It turned out to be hundred dollars. The animals were a little less, the animals were a bit more. You got a whole litter, a little bit more. Yes? Are we getting to pick up pets? Not with that.
Well.
There's nothing that possible.
All right, well, I think those questions may drop in the meeting, you know, if they're gonna they've got a way to somehow, they've got a way to somehow explain them or fix them. Hold on. I don't.
The high end for them is the wet, the poor.
Do I know where it is?
I've checked it all over, I don't know.
And I'll follow up on those questions and get back to you at the next meeting. See if it changes your opinion about the shelter. All right, moving on to item number six, council to discuss and give input on the draft Vator urban design standards. So I sent that lengthy document out earlier in the week. As I described, the, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a long process to finally get these approved. And so our, we, we got grant money last year for engine, for the engineering company to go through all these and rewrite them, make them current and normal and expected for developers and contractors. And what's gonna happen is eventually it's gonna have to, the final project or the, the final product will have to go to planning committee for review. They'll have to have a public hearing. They'll, they'll need to go to the state for review for sixty-day period. Then it'll, then the council, then the planning committee can vote to send it to the council for approval and the council can finally prove it. So, I mean, even if we hurry, we're looking at the end of the year, best case, to get this done, so. Very technical. I don't know if most of us are qualified in any way to really judge, judge these, but I wanted to get any, any input on you.
We're a small town, why are we competing with the big towns with buses and other things that we don't use, that in this thing?
Because, for instance, in, in this, in these plans, it talks about sidewalks and lighting and all of those things, for instance, that the subdivision is going to have to adhere to. You know, whether you're a big town, big city or a small town, you still, you still need to have standards for these contractors. Otherwise they'll come in, otherwise they'll come in and do whatever they want. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just asking, why do we have something in there for buses?
Which, what is the, is it?
It was a part in there, they're talking about buses.
It probably talks about.
Regular, not school, it sounded like regular buses.
So if it's talking about buses and vehicles, it's probably talking about turn radiuses and things like that. In, in the design standards, the roads need to be certain widths to allow fire trucks and other turnaround.
Okay.
Vehicles to turn around, and so buses could be one of those things, too.
It just was odd.
Yeah, you'd need to have room for that, so.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all in there. And again, this is just, there's no discipline tonight. It's just giving counsel heads up that this is in the works and that if you had any input or if you had an expert that you knew personally and you wanted to show them this, you know, please do. Any other, any other input for council on this at this time? No? It should not be substantially different in the program. Although the attorney seems like he didn't have chapter. I imagine he'll suspend it in chapter one with the demonstration. Okay, moving on to the.
Hi, how are you?
Discussion. Number seven, council to discuss the draft city of Vader twenty twenty-three budget. This is one of many opportunities council will have to give input on the budget. As we get closer to the end of the year, as we, as we spend money and as we get money reimbursed, the budget numbers will continue to change a little bit. You know, it's, you can only, you can only predict out to the end of the year so well, right?
Right.
I mean, so. So you'll still. Yeah, and so you'll see a, a, a more fine-tuned document as we get closer. I expect probably, or what meeting? It was one of them that we're gonna have the workshop on, was it the next one? Yeah. So at the next council meeting, we'll have, after the public hearing, we'll be able to talk at length about the property tax levy. If that's something that we wanted to change, we haven't changed it in a number of years, which makes data very unusual. Also, we should have better idea on the sewer, the sewer budget. Usually our sewer budget is unchanged from year to year, nothing much changes. This year, a lot has changed. And so we're gonna need to talk about sewer rates and if that's something we need to increase. One of the things we've seen just recently is our power bill for the new plant is about nine times higher than what it was before. We've gone from about a hundred and eighty dollars a month to fifteen hundred dollars a month.
What the hell are they doing over there?
We have twice as many aerators. We have.
A what?
Aerators, so the things that stir the water up.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, to meet the, to meet ecology's guidelines for the cleanliness of the water, we needed twice as many aerators to do that. We have other pumps running for the waste, so when there are a lot of solids that come through the system that don't go into the ponds and there's a screen system set up.
Right, yes.
And the screen system, it has an automatic corkscrew that takes the solids and moves them up a conveyor belt and then drops them into a dumpster. And then the garbage company can come every week and dump the salt, dump those things away. And so that thing is always running. There's a new building down there. For those of you that haven't been down there yet, we're gonna need to do a tour. But the building is about the size of City Hall. And there's a heat pump that heats and cools the building. There is a variety of electronics down there. There's a second building that's for creation of chlorine. They have electrolysis machines in there that use electricity to turn salt into chlorine that uses electricity. So it's just a lot more stuff.
What kind of security do we have?
An eight-foot tall chain link fence with barb, with four barbed wire angled things around the whole top.
Yeah.
It looks like Green Hill.
We don't have someone there twenty-four hours.
We don't have someone there twenty-four hours.
We don't have cameras.
We don't have cameras.
We need a dog.
A sewer dog?
Yeah.
It's old school, but I like it. When you put him in that fence, they're not getting that. Luckily, there's really not a lot that's, I mean, the fence makes it look like there's something exciting down there, but there really isn't. I mean, the, there's nothing inside the building that's any, that's worth any more value than, say, in City Hall. Just a couple desktop computers and that are probably worthless already.
You guys drive them in?
Right now, they're being blocked off, you know, some people walk down, some people don't. But once it's, I have to be myself, I'd be leery to go down there just because of construction, we don't want anybody. But once we know, once we can give them the go-ahead, I'll make sure everybody knows, you know, to make that an active part.
Yeah. Can.
Currently, there's an outside gate even going in before you get to the plant.
Yeah. They're blocked up north, right now, when they say north, right there at the first intersection. So kind of, they don't want anybody down there, they don't want them going the wrong place and.
It's pretty quiet now. But, but yeah, there's an eight-foot gate within security, get a gate.
This is all over the way that we always.
Once you tell us that we're okay, then. Anyway. Active construction sites are kind of like, never know what you can actually step into.
We could, you know, we could look into.
Especially there.
Some type of motion detector thing or something like that.
Do do you guys have a local stop area, like for a bathroom, for anything?
No, not really, no. And when I say no, a lot of people have like the door code to the fire hall over here. So it's different, different places that some people use, but it's not a universal thing. If that's a good question.
Yeah. Is there a break room down there?
The island at the lab.
I think there's an additional room. I've just heard about them hanging out around the refrigerator and all this stuff in man caves.
It might be a good spot to let you guys.
There's no cell phone reception down there.
Well, you guys don't use cell phones anymore, do you? Yeah.
Get something better than cell phones?
Yeah, they're.
So, but yeah, back to, back to the, back to the budget, there's been an increase and, you know, along those lines. So we also have a phone line down there with internet, which we didn't have before, so now we have a phone bill down there. That way, the, the system's automatic, it's all automated, so the system can mail out to the wastewater operator twenty-four hours a day if there's an issue, so he can, you know, to come back down and things like that. So anyway, the point is, budget-wise, there are additional operating costs and we're still doing the analysis on it to see what that does with our.
We have new.
With our rates.
New buildings, right, too, as well.
The buildings?
Buildings. You know, new.
We, yeah, yeah, and so we can take that into consideration, too. You know, if we know we have another two dozen homes going and that's two dozen ratepayers, you know, we could take that into account. But we definitely don't wanna be running, you know, running in a deficit. So luckily, you know, we don't have any new construction loans. The city has loans from many, many, many years ago that are getting close to being paid off over the next up to three years, I think, two to three years, so we can look at that as well, so.
Yeah, I wanna be careful about wages and many of the wages.
Probably even have to, not extremely high, but some.
We'll have those numbers for you, we'll have, we'll put together, we'll put it together and so we'll have, you know, if we don't run them, we don't raise rates, this is what it'll look like, you know, if we wanted to raise it a little bit, a little bit more and whatever.
But probably it's answered, don't go to that budget.
Correct. Yeah, they.
Have to be sewer bill.
Right, this people sewer bills, their utility payments go to the utility. Period.
Not all the funds that.
We'll make sure you have all the information on that.
Unfortunately, I think everything is going to be going up a lot more. Well, I know that we just did our payroll thing, but they announced just a few days ago that the twenty twenty-three minimum wage is going to be fifteen seventy-four. It's going up over a dollar.
We don't have to increase.
Well, I know, I know we're good, but all that's going to do is cause everything to go up.
It's all based on the energy price that, that's what started this mess.
Yep.
The oil prices and stuff, get the oil out of this country. Now we have a freaking mess.
Yeah.
They shut down all, all of federal land. Now they wanna take our timber rights away, right? They, you know, the speed of timber rights.
Yeah, so it's, it's going to get ugly and unfortunately, I think that, I mean, we're going to have to. Yeah, we're gonna have to continue to pay our bills and the only way to do that is for everybody to contribute.
But not too much, 'cause we got a lot of old people running through this town. They ain't got that much money.
Well.
You know, they barely afford this stuff now, barely can eat, barely can get gas and what are they gonna do but, you know, flushing their toilets, you gonna back off them, 'cause they don't have that much money. You can spend.
One of the things that we're gonna.
Well, we don't have that much money, so where do we get it? We all have to pay.
Right, but I'm just saying, don't go, go hog wild.
Well, in the end, you're the ones that get. Well, in the end, you're the ones that get to make that decision. We provide you that information. You know, no one wants to raise rates, but you know, when power goes up, someone needs to pay the power bill.
I'm just saying, don't make it so painful.
Yeah, well, that was the whole point down there.
Yes.
Yeah.
The city's been very careful, you know, I mean, we, definitely our rates are higher than if you went to a large city. But compared, but compared to the other small cities in the area, we're very comparable, if not less. And so we've done a really good job with that. So, but at some point
But we will have to
At some point, yeah, yes, sometimes you need, at some point you need to keep up with, keep up with inflation. And everything, everything goes up. So, but anyway, we'll have that information to you. Diane, you were saying something.
I was going to say, one of the things that is part of that package of analyzing the sewer is to look at raising the threshold for people who are considered senior so that more people qualify. I did a study on that last year and the cost to the city would be minimal because we're talking, you know, five to ten people, but to them, it makes a difference. So it's not like we're after everybody to add their I mean, expense.
Well, yeah, the dollar income level is ridiculous. I mean, you're practically very small enough, they could have get qualified. Maybe do it by age or something. When anybody over a certain age gets a reduced rate or something.
Well, the way it's set up now, if you're sixty-two years or older and you qualify under what's called a very low income.
Yeah, but that's very low, it's very low.
The county, on the other hand, does what is called low income, which is a tier above us. And so that's what I'm proposing is for us to match the county with that. And then, so it's more consistent because people, they get a discount from the county, but they don't qualify with us. And so
And we base these, these tiers come from, was it commerce?
It's a CBPG rate rate that comes to HUD and it's every June, they reissue the amount.
So these income levels, they come from, you know, they come from another organization that dictates what low, 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 and so on and so forth.
And our code is really specific how it was written.
Does this include
We can change that. Does this include people on like, young families on welfare that
It's income-based, so it's not age-based.
It's okay. I thought, I heard
We have
We also have discounts for senior citizens.
Okay, that's what I was calling.
And they have to have a low.
So we don't have only low income?
No.
Okay, so you have to be either, all right, so you have to be other senior citizen or disabled and have a low income. If you're, if you don't match all those, then you don't, you don't apply. So if you're
That's currently has that.
So if you're twenty-four years old and super low income, you wouldn't qualify. Unless you are disabled.
We can't make it, like so many first come, first come qualifiers?
I don't think we can do that. But I don't think we can do first come, first served, but you guys could certainly consider some options to include people who are
Well, I think we're mainly, we put it up to county standards.
But keep in mind, the more it sounds bad, I'm not trying to be callous here.
Yeah.
But, you know, the more people that qualify this, qualify for this, the more everyone else has to pay to make up for it. Because, you know, to maintain the sewer utility costs whatever it costs. You know, if you start having all these other people not have to pay or pay very little, everyone else has to pay more, you know, and that's
That's a lie.
That's the way, what do you call it, socialism works, right?
Socialism.
That's, I mean, but you don't like it, but that's the society we live in, you know, we help out those that don't have it. So that and so, you know, it just depends on what level of giving you want everyone else in the city to have to pay. This is, you know, the raising rates and discussing the budget is probably one of the most difficult decisions council members have every year, right? You're taking money from everybody else. That's the property taxes, that's the utility budget.
That's mine, so at least you're not just a couple of
Yep, but that's, that's, that's one of your jobs. All right, we've beat this with a, beat this decision right here. If you have any other input right now, you know, take a look at those numbers, the spreadsheets that were sent, spend some time on it. And at the next meeting, we'll have even more updated numbers for you.
I wanted to ask a question about how this is being presented. Is this readable? Does it work for you guys? Do you need to change something? This time on the signatures, I did add comments on the side as far as how this will pay, if you change that, add that, whatever. That's my perspective. You'll see in writing, in blue writing. Okay. Now, as the months progress, we'll get more definitive information about, like, for example, how much tax we're going to get from state. How much it's going to cost for annual subscriptions for different things, those kinds of things. So we'll have updated
We'll have my
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, moving on to public comment, any members of the public have anything to say?
Don't stand up, all stand up if you want, no.
Elected officials, one more comment. Is there anybody?
Show up tomorrow night.
Movies in the park. Very nice. Thank you for doing that. All right, this meeting is adjourned at seven oh one PM. Thank you, everybody.